December 9th, Board of Selectmen, this is a workshop meeting to order. Before I do, I have one thing that I missed last week that I wanted to just make a moment to say. I'm gonna get my notes out here. On Thanksgiving, the Legion graciously did a Thanksgiving dinner for anyone who wanted to come, and they had, they served over 400 dinners. And 130 of them were delivered to homes, and I just wanted to thank the Legion and everyone who volunteered down there and all the donors for the turkeys and food and everything else. So, thank you for letting me indulge us with that for a minute. Acceptance of the agenda, seeing objections, the agenda will be accepted. Announcements, the Board of Selectmen's meeting is videotaped and audio-recorded, so if anybody has a problem with that, don't stand up or say anything. Workshop. Our first item is to review the 2016-2017 health insurance projections overview of the town health insurance program.
Mr. Chairman, our health insurance consultant, Ed Burns, is here from NFP. He's going to do this review that's listed on the agenda as well as provide an overview of the Affordable Care Act and the financial implications that are approaching us in all likelihood that are significant. He'll review some cost-reduction options, some of which we've already heard about that require collective bargaining, and they are challenging. So, we have a lot to work on with health insurance.
Hello again. Thanks for having me back out here. So, what we're talking about here is future strategies and considerations, and simply that to be considered. And we wanted to go over a few things here. So, considerations in the future, very importantly with the, as we all understand, the budget crunches around this time of year, a projection of where we believe the renewal might be for your working rates for your self-funded medical plan for July 1 of 2016. And then a review of the Affordable Care Act, the new Cadillac taxes, it's been called. We did that with a five-year projection out to show rather dramatic cost increases due to that Cadillac tax. And then, just some, we'd be remiss if we didn't consider looking at contributions with regards to retirees. So, jumping right into it, we wanted to, first off, start with what are the options for next year? And some of the options, as we explained in an earlier presentation, are joint, different joint purchasing groups, which includes, for example, the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, Mayflower Municipal Health Group, Gateway, Southeastern Mass Health Group, MIA, the Mass Inter-local Insurance Association, and of course, the biggest joint purchasing group of them all, the Group Insurance Commission. Just so everyone's aware, and it's just a reiteration of what we've said before, these groups, with the exception of the Group Insurance Commission, are going to pre-underwrite our group prior to allowing us to enter. So, they're gonna look at us, and they're gonna look at our experience, just like I'm gonna do in a few slides, and they're gonna predict your costs, same way any insurance company would do. They operate in the same manner. The GIC doesn't do that. They have set rates for everybody, no matter who joins. But that could hurt some of our opportunities to save premium dollars. Additionally, they're gonna look at our large claimants and make determination as to whether they even want us, based upon the number of large claimants. So, it's another concern that we might be limiting our ability to have alternatives. Finally, each of those groups, with the exception of the GIC and MIA, require buy-ins. So, they have certain surpluses that they developed over time. When a new group comes in, they have to be on equal footing with all the previous members. So, you could have a buy-in anywhere from $150 per contract per year to $3,500 per contract per year. So, it's something to consider when we look at these things, that there might be a big savings, but if you have to, you have a big buy-in to join the group, it might be offsetting any savings potential we could realize. So, we wanted to bring that up initially, just as a start off. So, now we go into the, obviously, I have tons, I could've had tons of slides, but looking at numbers is just boring. Here are the major factors. When I looked at the, all of your claims for the last 24 months, actually ended up with an increase in claims, most recent 12 months of not, of, my estimated increase is nine-and-a-half percent. That's where we're starting with. The key factors that go into that, claims cost per enrollee have actually decreased by 6% in the current 12 months over the just prior 12 months. On the other hand, prescription drug costs have increased 13.5% in the most recent 12-month period. That's very, very important because prescription drug inflation is no longer that 7% number we used to hear. It's actually almost 15% medical care inflation. What's happening is pharmaceutical companies are increasing the prices of generic drugs due to the, losing a lot of brand-name drugs that are going off-brand name and becoming generic, such as Lipitor, which is the biggest of them all. That's a very important category to be concerned about, and we're also predicting, you know, all the way until June 30 of 2017 when we're doing this. So, it's all, we got a lot of months ahead of us of inflation. Prescription drug costs as a percentage of the medical claims increased in the most recent period to 16.5% of medical care claims versus the prior 12 months, it was only 13.3%.
Bobby, do you wanna take questions as we go?
Yep, sure. Sure, whatever.
I'm just curious, in that one, for example, is that price or per employee utilization?
That's the cost of the total prescription drug claims for all employees for two 12-month periods. So, it's the claims cost.
And that's due to the increase in drugs? Not so much increase in, in actual prescriptions, but the increase in the cost?
It's actually both.
In the price? I just figured if we're using twice as much or half as much?
No, you're using, you're using more prescription drugs, and it's inflating at a much, the price of them are inflating at a faster rate.
So, it's both?
It's both.
We're using more for enrolling?
Yes.
And the price?
Yes, and it's not uncommon, it's not, it's not something out here. It's happening across the board.
It's not unique to the entire community.
It is not unique. Large claims, another factor, increased by 10% in the most recent 12 months over the just prior 12 months. That always is a concern.
And those are defined as?
Anything over 100, and I think I looked at $150,000.
Is that where our insurance kicks in, or is that?
Yes, yes. Is it 150?
Are those?
Or is it 175?
175.
175, it's 175,000.
Do you know, are those active employees or retirees?
Those are active employees. Generally speaking, Medicare-eligible retirees never get into reinsurance. We don't even cover them under the reinsurance policy because we have Medicare A and B to cover most of it.
Do we know, are those injuries related to work, or are they just?
They're not necessarily injuries, they're, they're just diseases, for the most part.
And that's, that 10% is the more claims, so that means, you know, if last year, you know, we had a, you know, the prior year you had 100 folks, and this year we had 110 folks with larger claims?
Actually, that's 10% in dollars over the prior year, but there was a slight increase in the number of claimants also. Very, but it's slight, though.
And in your experience, do you find that this ebbs and flows?
Yeah, definitely ebbs and flows. Large claims, by their very nature, are, they used to be called shock-loss claims because they're just, they don't necessarily reoccur. Like, that one person gets better or not, and another person takes their place, and it's just up and down, up and down. So, very, very, very hard to predict, and that's why we buy reinsurance for it, to offset that risk of that, you know?
But over the course of a 10-year period, do you have a percentage?
Yeah, pretty much over a 10-year period, you gotta, you're pretty good at, the reinsurance companies that provide the premium costs for us do. They have so much statistical information.
And you don't know?
About 10 years.
Do we, we don't know what that is, 7%, 6%, 10%?
Increase?
Oh, increases?
I mean, we don't have, we don't have going back 10 years where we were. We don't know that personally.
You don't know that personally. I'm a little new on it, but I have, I think I have like three or four years of experience, and there was quite a bit of fluctuation.
Okay.
One of the other things we noted, not a big factor, enrolled employees increased by a half of 1%, while members, the number of bodies we're insuring, increased by eight-tenths of 1%. So, that's a concern, not a big one, obviously.
Children?
Pardon?
The increase is children, more children?
Yes, yeah, yep, families are getting bigger. Medical care inflation, just as a note, is about 9% per year for an indemnity plan, your master medical plan. It's about 7.8 or so for the, for the PPO plan, which is your Blue Care Elect, versus about 7% for an HMO-type plan. That is for the medical portion only, not the prescription drugs, which are still inflating at over 14%. And once again, the Affordable Care Act has to be added into this whole thing, and that's worth about 2.5%. And you'll see it on this very next page here, which is, this is the actual pricing model that I use, and certainly many other people use. Don't have to go through the whole, all the numbers. What's important to understand is, at the end of the day, the trust account that holds all the money for these claims, administration costs, which is listed down in the middle as expected retention charges, including the Affordable Care Act, and pooling charges, which are the risk charges. So, claims, administration, and risk, you have to have enough money to fund that trust account for the town and the employees to cover all of the claims that are, claims, administration costs, Affordable Care Act, and risk charges that are gonna occur July 1 of 2016 to June 30 of 2017. So, all of those factors are included there. And what we did, we took, we took a look at the prior 12 months, the current 12 months, we took 45% of the prior, 55% of the current, because it's more, more current, therefore it's more believable, and came up with a number of composite cost for everything of 1957. The current composite rate is 1787. Just happens to work out to 9.5%. But that's a formula that's tried and true, it's been used for well over 30 years. And it's, every single insurance company uses virtually the same formula as I'm using right here. And I, down at the bottom, just reiterated some of the causes of the increase. Significant increase in the cost of prescription drugs, improving claims experience during the current 12 months for medical care, but expected growth in members, still have a whole long time before the renewal date, and also, you know, plan conservatively is obviously the mantra here, because we don't, we have to, we can't have too little money in that, put away in that trust fund. It has to be the right amount of money.
Just another question, the prescription drug cost. You go back to the, I'm not asking you to go back, but we had, we had four or five plan options at the beginning. Is, is the cost of prescription drugs pretty much the same, sort of per drug across the board? So, it doesn't matter if you're in the GIC or in our own plan, you pay $2 for an aspirin or whatever the deal is?
Yeah, pretty much, drugs are the same cost right across the board. It really doesn't matter upon plan design, except for the fact that some plans have higher copays. So, the employees paying that, that's the only real difference.
Good, thanks.
All right, so, that's, so that's where, you know, my feeling, if I was sitting in your shoes, that's what I'd be putting away right now for July 1, for your medical care plan. This next subject is a difficult one. The Cadillac tax and the Affordable Care Act is, there are no regulations on this particular law right now. It's not, doesn't come into effect until 2018, so we don't have any regulations. All we have is fear that if this happens, it's gonna be a real problem. The tax is 40% of the cost of health coverage that exceeds some predetermined thresholds. So, there's a 40% load.
And how much of our, our plans out there now are gonna meet that Cadillac tax? Do we know?
Well, if, if the town were required to pay that tax in 2017, so, next, kinda next year, it'd be approximately $800,000.
That we'd have to pay?
That you'd have to pay.
And is most of that master medical?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, it'd be shifting. Both, both the master medical plan and the Blue Care Elect plan are going to be subjected to that. And it's, you have more bodies in the, in the Blue Care Elect plan, so it's definitely gonna get, it's gonna be painful.
The hard, long answer is, is that we need to sit down with the unions and try to get rid of these plans, otherwise it's gonna cost the taxpayers another $800,000 a year to run these plans.
Without, without exception, we, we have to work cooperatively with everyone to come up with ways so that no one pays this, because, once again, the cost slides right through the, right through the premium to everybody.
And it's important to note that by negotiating these plans out, we're not, there's still very good plans out there that fall underneath the Cadillac tax.
Without question, without question.
And save the taxpayers and the user money in the long run.
Yep, without question. There are things we're gonna all have to consider doing so that we're not paying taxes on something that's supposed to be non-taxable. So, I mean, that's a real concern. The, the current thresholds are $10,200 an annual premium for an individual coverage and $27,500 for family coverage. All of those thresholds will be updated for 2018 when the final regulations are issued. And after that, every year, they'll be indexed to medical care inflation in the future years. There are some professions that are being considered for higher thresholds, such as public safety employees. I know that, right now, it's not part of the regulation, safety employees are, but light departments are being considered for a high-risk occupation, DPWs are being considered. So, there could be a bunch of people in any municipality that might be at a higher threshold than some of the, you know, non-high-risk professions. So, that's being considered, that's gonna be another one. Currently, the public safety employees, the thresholds are 11,850 for individual and 30,950 for family. So, those, that's something that, it's difficult for me to, when I looked at projecting this out for five years, 'cause I didn't know how many different positions there were. Both the Blue Care Elect, as we just discussed, the PPO and the master medical, will be exposed to the tax rather quickly. You're pretty much almost already there. And as I said, if you had to pay the tax in 2017, it would be almost $800,000. But the impact is on the next slide, and it's unreadable, because there's so many numbers built into that. But what it tried to do is just take the annual rates, number of bodies, obviously, in each group as of, as of rather recently, and, and try to calculate how much they would exceed those thresholds, and, and then multiplying just like by 40% the amount that exceeded that, and tabulating that up, not only in, for total cost, but town share, employee share at the current contribution levels. And you can see in 2000, I think it says 18, the Cadillac tax impact is 611,000 was adjusted. Then, in one year, it more than doubles to 1,505,000.
My question, on that Cadillac tax, the town has to pay a part of it. Does the, does the individual pay part of it as well? Does it come out of their pay or out of their retirement?
As of right now, the regulations allow employers to, to share that with their employees. I shared it just in the 75-25 split.
And that 75-25, that would have to be negotiated with the unions, or can we say whatever?
I don't, I, I'm not an attorney, a labor attorney, but I think that's a question for a labor attorney.
This is an important issue for the town.
Certainly is.
And for the voters, because we have these, these plans in place that are gonna end up costing the town million-plus dollars, and we have 500 town employees that are holding ground, that don't wanna give up anything, and I think it's important for the voters. I mean, I'm gonna come right out and say it, we can't afford this. The town can't afford this. And the, I'm sure every town employee right now that's hearing this at home is going, I'm glad Bob's not running for reelection, because I wouldn't vote for him. But, you know what? It's important for the voters to know that 1.2 or $1 million a year is an excessive amount for these extreme plans. And you know what? We're not saying you're not gonna be insured. We're still gonna give you very good insurance, but it's a million-dollar savings a year.
It's not just you. I mean, I, you know, I think it's clear that we offer plans that have excellent benefits that don't have to be as expensive as they are. And so, that's what we're dealing with. I'm, you know, I'm with you all the way.
Well, I think it had to be said, so I said it.
I think, I think it's very important for everyone to understand that this is very crucial to understand and for, for it to be, made, everyone to be made aware of it. There is a huge force in this country right now pushing to have this repealed. My, my concern, this is just me speaking, is, and, and most, and most of the national unions are, are the ones trying to get, stop this, and trying to get this Cadillac tax repealed. The issue I see is that this is, you see those large numbers up there? That's from 351 communities just in Massachusetts. That's all funding the Affordable Care Act. So, and this is, that's, all this money is going to fund the Affordable Care Act. So, if the, if the government doesn't have this money, how do they continue the afford, all of the services?
The, the bill is gonna be paid somehow, some way, and this is one way.
One way.
If you don't pay it this way and it's repealed, we all, as taxpayers, are gonna pay it another way. You know, that's what's gonna happen.
And taxes can only go up 2.5% and health insurance costs is going up 9.5% to 10, 10.5%?
Correct. And this whole chart was, I did, I did the first year at 9.5% only because that's the number I came up with. I used 10% for every other year into the future for a rate increase, which, and that's what causes that doubling effect of the taxes.
And probably that's being conservative, if we continue down the path we're on.
It could very well be.
Ed, question from your, your last slide about high-risk employees. Does that have to, does that relate to like workers' comp? Like, what is a high-risk profession?
Well, the high-risk employees as of today are simply police and fire.
Okay.
Now, obviously, if you run the EMTs out of the fire, they're high-risk also. The, but they are considering right now adding municipal light departments and DPW. That hasn't been done yet, but I've heard it's well on its way.
Yeah, 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 no, it makes sense. So, that's in, so that would be in addition to our state workers' comp that we already pay for our employees?
Yes, yep, absolutely. So, hate to ruin everyone's night, but the last thing we just wanted to bring up, and it's just, we'd be remiss if we didn't bring it up for consideration, is considering the impact of what would happen if we mess around with retiree contributions, which are currently at 90-10. Not suggesting we do it, but I thought it was important to be here and just say, this is the impact. So, the top line there is 175 retirees with MedX-2 and a prescription drug plan currently at 90-10, and the town's annual premium is $499,548. If you shifted it to 75-25, town side goes down to $416,000, $83,000 in savings, and the increased cost, to be fair, to retirees annually would be $475.80. So, pretty much, I threw it in there just because, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job if we didn't throw out all the considerations that are on the table for this year, which include joint purchasing arrangements, plan, you know, plan considerations, Cadillac tax considerations, renewal considerations, and this.
So, let's go back to the prescription drugs. What is, what is it gonna take to get that more in line? Is it gonna take a change in what the prescription drug copay is? Is that the way to get at it?
Currently, it's the difficult way for, the difficult for us to, because the price changes are coming from the pharmaceutical companies. It's not from the utilization of the employees here. It's coming directly from the pharmaceutical companies themselves.
Do you see a trend in the industry as far as raising copays, or?
We're, we're seeing, yeah, we're seeing a lot of copays being raised up to the target level, which is always the GIC level.
And what's the GIC level?
GIC level is, I think it's 20, 20, $20 for tier one, which are generic drugs, 50 or 50 or $60 for tier two, which are brand name, and then $110 for tier three.
And what are we at now with ours?
Ooh, that's a good question.
I think the comparison is the issue to understand.
Actually, yours are pretty close. They're not that far off, because I think you did have an increase in your prescription drug copays a few short years ago.
That's important, if we're, if we're right there where it is.
You're not that far off.
So, we're just, the cost is the cost, then.
Correct.
It's not like we're, we have a special deal.
No, I don't think it's any, any issue with, you did a plan design on your plans right now.
The industry's raising their rates, and we're just gonna have to deal with it.
Right. Because, it's, but it's a difficult one to deal with, because it's simply pharmaceutical companies replacing profits from brand-name drugs that are going off. They're losing about 18 different, tier three, brand-name drugs to generic.
Right.
This year, so they're just trading.
So, now they're just, they're making the generic, so they're raising the prices in the generic.
Yep.
There's nothing we can really do.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of new, obviously. Every year, there's always new tier three drugs, you know, which are designer drugs which are saving lives.
So, is what you're saying is we should, in our retirement plan, we should increase our portfolio in pharmaceutical companies?
I am not an investment planner, so I will not say that.
Just, you know.
Yeah, but, but it, but, you know what? They're the, some of the most successful companies in the world.
Yeah, but it's, I just think it's an interesting observation, just think about, you know, you're, you're making returns here to pay for something else, you pay more, you know, it's the same dollar, just you're moving it around a lot, and someone's taking a hair of it every time.
I have no problem paying whatever for a drug that saves a life. It's just, if there's a cheaper way to get the same drug, then let's explore.
And pretty much Massachusetts mandates that anyways, because you have, doctors have to prescribe generics first.
I, I will say one thing that for myself personally, I would, I would not support a savings in, in pharmaceuticals that would require all of our employees to go to mail-order drugs and circumvent the local pharmacies. I think it's an important part of our economy, and people like to see their pharmacist and make sure they're getting what they're getting, and I'd rather see.
Not a requirement, but they have the option.
Well, yeah, I, I don't wanna take that option away from them. I would rather see them, you know, rather see them have the ability to be able to go to the local pharmacy and get their drugs and not have to rely on only mail-order. I just don't like that idea. So, that's just me, but I'm throwing that out there.
Sounds reasonable.
Don, do you have any questions?
Are plans with a health savings account an option for us as a town?
Well, I, yes, they're obviously an option, because they do reduce the premium dramatically by having, the only way to qualify for an HSA plan is to have, I think, a $1,500 individual deductible and a
3,000 family.
3,000 family deductible, and all of your expenses have to go through that deductible first.
Right.
So, everything, except for obviously preventative care, would have to go through that deductible first.
But if the town were to set up a plan like that and make contributions to the employees' health savings account, would those be subject to the Cadillac tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the Cadillac tax as of right now, and this is up for a big argument, flexible spending account contributions, and HRA contributions and HSA contributions get added to the premium.
Okay.
Which, once again, doesn't make much sense when you're trying to encourage people to do things like this. But that, that would definitely save money, and if, and certainly, you know, we have the capabilities of sitting down and explaining that to insurance advisory committees, or what they are, so they get a feel for them.
Yeah.
You know, certainly more than willing to do that, and, and not for many municipalities.
I had an HSA, and I loved it once it was funded, because it, you could go pay for your eyeglasses with the credit card, and it worked very well.
And the beauty of an HSA is that unused dollars, when you become Medicare-eligible and retire, you have those monies put away, and you can use those to pay your Medicare B premium, or you can use them to pay a supplemental Medicare premiums. So, you can use them for a lot of different things.
All this stuff needs to be negotiated into the union contracts. That's an important factor.
Everything needs to be negotiated.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, but I think what Don's suggesting, though, it might be something worth looking at. Because if you pay more, if you fund it and pay more here, but you're saving, if you save a lot more on the other side, and it's a better, and, and it covers more stuff, then that's something that
You just have to look at what the, what the ramifications are of the Cadillac tax. I mean, how much is that gonna increase?
Well, but I'm assuming that even if it, even if the Cadillac tax is on the HSA or either the other two that we have now, but if there are still savings by going to the savings account.
Right.
It should be on the table.
Yeah, we shouldn't take anything off. Absolutely. All these options should be out there.
Things like eyeglasses and other things aren't covered now, whereas for a lot of people, they would be covered.
I think the important part is gonna be for us to educate the public and the employees, especially the employees, on the benefits of this and that. I mean, we have employees that are still clinging to master medical, and in my, maybe I'm a layman here, but Mike's looking at the two policies. The PPO is just as good a policy that costs the town and the individual much less money, but they won't give up that master medical. And, you know, that, that's, that master medical plan is gonna really get, hit us hard with the Cadillac tax when it kicks in. And, you know, that was the plan of, that was the plan 30 years ago. It's not the plan now, and things evolve, and things change, and you have to look, you have to go with it. And we have to bring our, we have to really educate our employees and the public as to why this plan was great in the 70s or the 80s, but it's not great now, and get them to come along, so.
And we've actually begun that process, so.
Another question on that, Bobby. Ed, you said earlier that the PPO is, is part of the Cadillac or counts into it, the
It will, yep.
But it, it doesn't count as higher, uh, rate or?
Right, the rate is, the rate is significantly lower than the master medical plan, therefore the impact of the Cadillac tax, at least initially, is much less, right.
Got it. And, and, and what's that kind of ratio? You know, if, if we're at where we are now and it's 800,000, then in theory, everybody switches over to the PPO, we only pay 200,000 in the Cadillac or something?
Yep, yep. That's exactly the way it's going to work. It's going to be significantly less, because the PPO premium is significantly less.
Gotcha, so it's kind of a ratio.
Yep.
Thank you.
Exactly a ratio.
All right. Any, any other questions for it? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Keep up the good work. Okay, next item is the town administration fiscal 2017 general fund budget. I see a lot of people just beaming to get up and tell us all about it. Look, everybody's got little name placards behind their seats. Were we expecting a crowd tonight? We didn't want anybody to have to stand up?
I, I, I don't know.
So she knows who's missing.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, who's starting us off, Libby?
I'm going to start you off. Hopefully, nobody will have to say anything, but they are here just in case. Just to review with the board what our process has been, we begin the budget process around August, and we have a staff review of initial revenue projections and the development of assumptions for expenses. In September, we give the board generally an update on that, and we issue budget instructions to the departments. In October and November, we receive and review all of the expense increase requests from the departments, and we meet with every department to go over them. In November, end of October even, we begin to refine the revenue projections even further. We've met with the school department a couple of times, and we have had at least two meetings with the ad hoc budget work group, which, to remind everybody, is two members of the, is the chairman and vice chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, the School Superintendent, the Finance Director, and the Town Manager. And then we develop our budget recommendations for the board, and that is what is going to be before you tonight. So I'm going to take you through a PowerPoint, which is an overview of the budget, budget recommendations. In your packet, you have a draft budget message, which I'm also going to take you through after I get through the PowerPoint.
So everyone knows, the PowerPoint's not in our packet, so.
The PowerPoint is not in your packet. That's a tactic to make you pay attention. The Finance Director is going to take us through the very beginnings of the PowerPoint with some, just, again, it's an overview of the revenue and expense items for fiscal 17.
Good evening, thank you. I don't have the, thank you. So as we presented, I think it was even September or October, we projected the total amount of revenue that we could raise for fiscal 17 was $87,134,000. The budget recommendations project the expenses to be $86,843,000, which would leave us $291,000 under the levy limit for fiscal 17. The second slide here details major revenue type, excuse me, categories, being property tax, local estimated receipts, all other is a compilation of everything other than the motor vehicle excise, which is a big component, rooms and meals, and licenses and permits, and state aid, and there's, we didn't allocate free cash since we don't actually allocate any for the actual operating budget itself. So that shows that last year, the original projection during the budget cycle, we had projected 82 point, 82 oh 21, 82,21,000 in revenue. This year, we're projecting for the balanced budget, 86,843,000, which is a 5.88% increase, or 4.821 million. The expenditures are grouped into the major categories, being municipal departments, then we have the school department, non-departmental is health insurance, Barnstable County and general regular insurances, and then special appropriations are the subsidies to the enterprise funds, the county budget is included as a special appropriation, the reserve fund, OPEB, the cherry sheet, as well as the 1% town capital per the town code. So that comes, on the expenditure side, comes to the $86,843,000, which is a 5.88% increase over the prior year budget. So this slide, we break out the major revenue sources from the, the previous slide, seeing, you can see that 85% of it is generated from the tax revenue, the tax base, state aid and rooms and meals generate, the next largest being 4%, with licenses, licenses and permits, local estimated receipts, and motor vehicles comprising the other, about 7% of the taxes.
Sure.
Brian, on that, on that last slide or the breakup with the tax revenue, is that consistent? You know, the, on the pie of ratios from past years?
It is fairly consistent, yes. There would be some fluctuation based on what we had estimated for new growth and the fluctuation in the debt exclusions, because during, based on the amortization schedule, those will fluctuate a little bit, but it is fairly consistent, yes. Oh, that's interesting. One category is conveniently not shown. So we split these into the major categories, being municipal departments, school department, non-departmental, and the other is the special appropriations, which I had noted, and it's actually 12.38%. And from here, we kind of go into a little bit of a dive down into what some of the expenditures are. Town expenses, which are all non-salary related expenses, projected in the budget to be 6.911 million, which is about a 15, almost 16% increase. Included in that is the expense increase requests that have been recommended by town administration in the amount of $855,000. Salaries projected to be $17,684,000. Included in that is 497,000 of recommended staffing changes and increases. The school is included in this slide here, the operational expenses, 5.2 million, and then the projection for the school salaries is 21.269 million. So then this is some of the other major, major categories within the budget. As Ed previously noted, we're projecting a nine and a half percent increase in health insurance, so we have broken this out as we have been previously presenting between active and retirees. Based on discussions with our healthcare consult, or, excuse me, our general insurance consultant, we believe that it's going to be about a 10% increase, which is, would require 2.2 million to fund that correctly.
Can we talk about that, Brian? What is, what is our general insurance liability?
It's liability, the umbrella policy, E and O, all of those other buildings, cars, automobiles.
We've shopped that around? I mean, that, that seems like a lot for that kind of thing.
We actually, that's a very good question, and it's something that we are in consultation with them to have our health, our healthcare, I keep saying healthcare, my apologies. Our general insurance consultant actually put it out. It's a very arduous process, but it's something that I've had, we are going to have conversations in the next week or two about doing, to see if we can get a better rate.
From my business perspective, my, my liabilities and those type of insurance don't go up that much, and that seems like a pretty big increase.
It is, but we have an awful lot of buildings and stuff that we are insuring, so it is, I, I agree with you, and that's why we're going to look, because there are some much larger, there's some very large insurance companies that may be willing to underwrite it and may be able to do better, so it is something that we are working on, so. Debt service, that is simply, it's $7,177,000, it is per the amortization schedules that have, for the permanent debt that we have. We have spoken to Barnstable County, they have said that they're projecting a four and a half percent increase in the Barnstable, the assessment, so that's what we have programmed here.
Is that about what we run year per year?
That was what it was last year, yes. So that's in line with what it was last year, and that's what they're expecting again. The enterprise fund subsidies have increased about 2.28% to 7.982 million.
And what's that incurred from the debt?
No, well, that's just, we increased those about two and a half percent is what ended up being necessary to not drain all of the retained earnings from the, the two of, two of them, being solid waste in our island home. And, so that's what we did there. I'm sure there'll be more in-depth discussions as we move through this on our island home, so, and the subsidy, so. So some of the other expenses in the budget, which I called the special appropriations, the health and human services, we have recommended a $50,000 increase. Last year, it was appropriated at 350,000, we've recommended going to 400,000 this year. We have predicted no change for the county assessment. The reserve fund, we have, we feel comfortable at the 500,000, so that was my recommendation. Other post-employment benefits, we have, or I've made the recommendation that we continue to fund at the level we have recently, which is 500,000. Unpaid bill and overlay and other deficits are blank, because we, overlay and other deficits, we're not projecting any deficits, but this is where snow and ice would be put if we actually had a deficit. I'm praying that we don't. Unpaid bills, we do have a few that will be going there, but we're trying to see if we can actually fund them through the current year operating budget, once we get approval for, at town meeting, to pay them. Cherry sheet charges is the, the NRTA assessment and some special education assessments, their offsets. We predict about a three, a little over 3% increase there, based on some of my conversations. The community school, last year's appropriation was 350,000, we have recommended a $50,000 increase there as well. And then we have the minimal capital funding requirement according to the town code, which is $774,916. So all told, $86,843,248.
So, just a question, in general, I mean, it's a pretty full budget, it's a, in terms of the increases, you've got a number of new items in here, and new growth has been a driver for us, and if we come to a period where new growth goes back to $200,000 or whatever, we have to, I presume, feel comfortable that we can support these increases on a continuing basis?
Correct.
And you've thought that through?
I have thought that through, and we have, I've had extensive discussions with the assessor about new growth, and if you see the stack of permits that have to be done right now and what's still coming through, it's certainly, I think, for the future, it does, it does support that.
Well, that, that's not, you know, it's fine for a year or two, but if things go back to a recession or something.
True.
Where we build in a lot of cost increases, and I'm just trying to get a feel for how dependent you are on new growth above, say, $400,000. You know what I mean, Brian?
I, I do, and if, if it went down to that, then we would have to look at making some adjustments, because obviously there'd be, we had planned 900,000, so.
Well, and presumably, in your ad hoc, you've talked going out 10 years, but we used to have a forecast going out beyond one year, so.
Right.
The issue isn't just one year, it's further out.
No, it's not, that's correct, and we are internally looking at that all the time, so.
I'll just ask, Brian. I don't need an answer in this right away, but I'm curious, how does that new growth, those permits equate into the tax levy? I mean, if there's 200 permits there, and say each house is worth $1 million, that's 200 million more in taxable real estate, so.
But it's all, it's all about timing, about when it, I don't want to go.
No, but it sort of goes to Rick's question.
It does, and it's.
If they were all the end of the year, well, there's 400 new buildings that add to it, that increases the tax levy.
Clearly, there's a, there's a good tail, but I think, you know, we, one way to think about it, you could ask the assessor, if the new growth is $200 million, the tax impact of that is 600,000 or whatever.
Right.
This is a pretty straightforward ratio. We, it might be helpful to sort of get that in our mind, Brian, so we have a feel for that?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, if it ended tomorrow, but we have all these permits active.
Right, it'd probably take two years or something before it tailed off, I'm guessing.
It would take a little while, because a lot of it is based on timing of when, when, what existed on January 1st.
When the COs ordered.
Correct. So if it ended today, we would still have a run-out period that we would still be grab, would be calculating.
I raise the issue, because I can remember, you know, years ago, the town has been very fortunate.
Yes.
Compared to other places with new growth, and that was great until you hit a period, which we've hit a couple, where it dropped substantially, and we suffer the consequences.
I went in the building department yesterday, and there's 200 applications in front of the building department.
And, and the one thing I do want to make note of is the fact that we are conservative in doing that, and like last year, for an example, during the budget, this whole process that we're going through now, last year, we budgeted only about 700 or 750,000, and it came in at 1.1 million. So we certainly, we, we do try to be as conservative as we, while still being realistic as what we believe it will be, so.
I've always looked at it, I think you're, you're safe if your new growth is funding new positions and new things, and then those new positions themselves are negotiated to live within the two and a half percent, and, you know, and not, if you're not using new growth for current expenses.
Right.
Then you should fill this out, you should be all right. If things slow down, you, you don't do new hires, you don't do new things. The problem, the problem I think occurs is when you start counting on that to fund existing, then I think you're in trouble.
But man, I think it's pretty clear, if you take this and, and run it out, and take new growth down from whatever to 300,000, and run the rest at two and a half, it, it could get pretty tight, and my guess is, pretty quickly.
Yes. So.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Keep going.
So, kind of to follow on what Ed had talked about, this slide that we included shows what the active and retiree health insurance expenditures have been from 2011 through the actuals in 2015, what we had budgeted in 16, and what we have proposed for 17, to, to fund the health insurance line for the general fund. And I think this is where I will turn it back over to the town manager.
Thank you.
Could I just, Brian, just follow up one more time on the retiree? The slide we showed before was a premium cost for the retirees, but that wasn't the total cost, this is the total cost.
This is the general fund expenditure, it's not the total cost, so it's what we, what we had budgeted and what the town paid into the health insurance trust.
I just want to remember, remind that, when you look at the slides that we looked at earlier, we were looking at about a half a million dollars. Here, we're looking at, what, two and a half million dollars.
Brian, can you explain to me, maybe I'm not reading the numbers right here, but 2014, the retirees goes from 2.1 to 2.4 in 2015, then it drops in 2016, and then it goes up, but the numbers drop significantly in 15, 16, 17.
Well, you do have, what you have, if you have retirees that unfortunately do pass away, you have changes, and, and this is not, this is based on, purely on a statistical calculation, extrapolating it out, basically a 75-25 or 74-26 split. It's not a pure, every, exact calculation is, in that manner. It's basically looking at how many retirees we have on the bills, how many actives, and doing the split that way.
Got you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Libby, you're up.
Okay. So of the expense increases, we received $2.4 million worth of requests from our departments. We are recommending 1.6 million. It was not feasible to recommend more than that. Of the 1.6, 312,000 or so are one-time expenses, and the rest are ongoing expenses, and we will fund these through the funding sources shown there, the available tax levy, budget adjustments, alternate funding sources such as the waterways improvement fund, beach revolver, free cash for at least one one-time item. And there are some potential revenue increases, although we have not factored them into our funding scheme here, because they haven't occurred yet, and some of them will have to go before the board. The specific, getting down a little further into the detail of the specific funding sources for that total of 1.6 in additional expenses, is that 1.2 would be covered by the tax levy. There's one ongoing item that would be covered by free cash, and then there are other funds which are shown on the next slide. And that is broken out here. The Cape and Islands License Plate Fund will cover a $25,000 item, which is a portion of the Fasbury Connector program. The beach revolver will cover some ATV replacements. The waterways improvement fund will cover a town, the beginnings of a town, or, sort of beginnings, more of a continuation of a town pier maintenance program. The ambulance reserve fund will cover some equipment upgrades for one of the ambulances. And the sewer enterprise fund, this isn't obviously a general fund item, but in the budget message, we, one of our requests is to have a new position of a sewer, we haven't decided what to call it yet, sewer or wastewater superintendent or director, that would be a standalone position and department broken out from the DPW, and the sewer enterprise fund would fund that position.
The Cape and Islands License Plate Fund, what's going to happen? Do we have any idea or projection of revenues when it goes to the Nantucket Plate Fund? Because we're getting close to that, right? I think.
Well, the Cape and Islands License Plate Fund continues. There, there's just another license plate now.
So we'll get this money as well as that money?
No, that, that, the new license plate has nothing to do with the town. That's a, that's a totally separate entity. We don't get any of that money.
Okay, where's that go? Nonprofits?
Yeah, it's to a nonprofit group.
We'll still get this approximately each year, or? Okay, so we'll still get this approximately each year, or?
We get, right now, we get approximately between 50 and 60,000 a year from the Cape and Islands License Plate. We are wondering if the new license plate will have any impact on the Cape and Islands plan.
It's too early to tell.
It's too early to tell, but we're trying not to get crazy with spending out of the Cape and Islands License Plate Fund, just in case there might be an impact.
Okay.
This sheet shows what we believe the goals and priorities are for fiscal 17 for the administration and the board of selectmen. I have the board of selectmen in red because I'm waiting, going to be waiting for you all to sort of confirm these. These are things that we've heard over the past 12 to 18 months or discussed, or have come forward internally, and they're, they're all listed there. One of the, I won't read every single one of them, but one of the items that you are going to get a future, more detailed standalone presentation on is the third bullet, staffing for increased service and seasonal demands and to meet priorities. Through the fire department, we are proposing the implementation of an advanced life support ambulance service, which is an upgrade from the basic life support ambulance service that we have now. That is going to be a cost to the town. There will be an offset from increased ambulance fees. We've been talking to the chief about it and he is got, working on a PowerPoint, where, thank you, and will be, but we want to make sure it's, um, explanatory enough. So we'll, and it tells what the staffing requirements are going to be over time. It's going to be a phased-in program. Really, it is a, a program that, it's very unusual for a town not to have advanced life support. We are one of the only, if not the only, town in at least our region, if not the state, that maintains a basic life support service. So that, that is coming.
When you say advanced life support, you're going from EMTs to paramedics, correct you?
Correct.
Correct.
This slide shows the initiative needs and goals that we would meet or address with our budget recommendations. Again, I won't review every single one of them, but there are a number of new staff or increased staff, um, like say, part-time to full-time. Expense increases that would support additional programs or items such as an additional testing, for example, the water quality and pond item. There are additional water quality testing expenses. There are, um, some fertilizer reduction education efforts, and we're going to be giving you an update on that at your January 6th meeting.
Do we have a, in this budget, is there any funding for a seasonal fertilizer inspector position?
We tried to fund that in this current year's budget. We got no applicants. We had a, um, detailed discussion about this yesterday. It's not an easily filled position, but that money would carry over, so we can keep trying. But we also have had, not to totally divulge our fertilizer reduction plan that you're going to be hearing about on January 6th, but one of the things we talked about is to better utilize existing staff during the, the season for inspections of properties. Our seasonal food service inspector perhaps could come a month earlier and stay a month later and focus on that, and also, you know, when he's not doing food service inspections, he could get out there, as can some of the other staff.
But, but just to be clear, so if you had 25,000 for a part-timer in the current budget, you're proposing to have 25,000 in next year's budget, or not?
Yes, I don't think it was 25,000, but whatever the number is.
Whatever, whatever the number was.
It would ca, carry through to the next year, yes.
And, sorry, just to follow up on that more, so, one of the reasons for that position not being filled was, was it due to any cost or?
No applicants, no applicant.
No applicants. Do we have any sense of that though, Jeff, or?
Um, we did.
You know, because this is a, you know, the board has discussed this numerous times.
The, it's, it's, um, I'll let Jeff say why he, it was hard to, um, fill the position, but there are other reasons why this has been very difficult, which we'll review when we do that little review.
Sure, so probably the greatest difficulty we had in filling that position and finding that individual is there's a certain amount of training and expertise to go into evaluating fertilizer on the site, and, uh, the difficulty that we had with it is the pay that comes with our seasonal pay schedule isn't what that person can make applying fertilizer and landscaping, was the feedback that we got. That was the difficulty is when we're paying, you know, 15 or 16 dollars an hour, they could go and apply fertilizer and work for a company and make 30 or 35 dollars an hour. So that's where the difficulty kind of came.
We're doing this on the 6th, you said?
Yeah, yes.
All right, good. I have a whole bunch of questions for you, Jeff.
Near the bottom there, the substance abuse, abuse prevention, that actually was an, an idea that could be what the increase in the Health and Human Services allocation could go towards, but, um, it's not necessarily dedicated specifically to that. I did have a bit of a discussion with the chairman of the contract review committee about that, and hopefully that's the area that it could go to.
Could I just mention, yeah, I mean, I think if this board had strong feelings about that, I think we may want to say so to the contract review committee who, who makes recommendations to us, but it might be helpful to let them know in advance if that's something we want emphasis on.
Yes, agree. This sheet is just some actions and efforts that we.
Can we go back one slide?
Sorry, sure.
I just had one quick question. Housing plus, what is?
Uh, that is a part-time housing specialist position.
For what?
To try to promote the various initiatives of the town to increase housing stock, to increase the subsidized.
Isn't that what Tucker's doing?
Tucker is a consultant to what focus on really a specific project right now, which is the Four Fairgrounds Road Project. This position would promote these things on an ongoing basis, help track the subsidized housing inventory.
How much does that cost us?
Um, I can get, I will get to that in the budget message, but I think it's around 25,000.
And it's a position I think we used to have?
We did use to have it as a full-time position.
Yeah.
This is being requested as a part-time.
That's why I'm asking. It was a position that was funded that I wasn't too keen on because nothing got done. So I want to know a little bit more about this before we fund it, please.
Okay. This sheet is just meant to show actions and efforts to reduce expenses and/or increase efficiencies and transparencies that we do on a pretty well, a regular, ongoing basis. They're all listed there. Another couple that came up were annually, as the board knows, we have our WPI projects, Worcester Polytech Institute students do a variety of projects. They're doing some for the town now, and often some of their recommendations can be very helpful. Also, I, I think I have this in the budget message, but as the board knows, we recently signed on to the Commonwealth's Community Compact, which will help us revise all of our financial policies as best management practice, so that's a, another thing that we're working on. Some other recommendations. We are recommending that the board really consider a strategic plan, which we are proposing that, that we get really going on maybe in 18 or fund in 18. We could discuss how we would do it during fiscal 17 or even in our current year. We're just not exactly sure how much, how, you know, we, we need to have some discussion on how you would want to proceed with it to help us figure out how much it might cost. Could get a little costly if you have a facilitator. It could get, um, a little costly depending on, you know, how comprehensive it would be. But we think that's something that will help us, as it, as it says there, move forward with financial and programmatic planning for out-budget years. As kind of a component of the strategic plan, we're recommending a staffing and resource assessment town-wide to look at our, very comprehensively, our staffing and resources because there has been so much growth in the community and in the town, and we very much on a piecemeal basis address those things. That could be an, a possibly costly venture. I've done a little bit of research into it with some other towns, and some of the advice I've gotten back, um, which has been very good from other managers, is that you really want to hire a firm that can completely focus on your town and not have, you know, 20 other clients. And, and that could get, you know, a little costly. So we didn't, we also weren't sure how the board would view that, but we, we think it's important enough to, at some point within the next year or two, to, to undergo that effort. Another recommendation regards an operational override to address the funding of our island home, and we do have an additional couple of slides on this. It's been discussed by the board a couple of times. The island home's retained earnings are on the downswing, I would say. Brian's going to go through.
Sure.
This part of it.
So, uh, the top part of the slide is just the retained earnings that were certified by DOR from 2011 through 2015. Last year, uh, was 1,649,000. Should be noted that that's about a 5.3% decrease from 14, and 14 was about a little over a 10% decrease from 13. So using that, we have run it out, uh, trying to just look at what it might look like, and we've used about, just under, right around a 5% potential decrease. One thing to note is that the majority of these retained earnings are built by the certified public expenditure money that we get every year in excess of a million dollars, and if at any point the state decides not to continue to appropriate that, then these retained earnings would certainly plummet in, from that. So we're projecting that we're going to continue, um, based on some of the presentations that you've seen before, uh, with regard to all the other revenues and the pressures on the health insurance, or the insurance reimbursements to, uh, the island home, that we will continue to see, uh, some type of degradation in the retained earnings in the next four to five years on an annual basis.
Good, good, good. Well, you know, I'm a little, uh, when you, when you talk about retained earnings as the, um, likely place where, um, the impact is felt if the state terminates its program, it seems to me that, I mean, I think of it a little differently, that we have a number of revenue streams for our island home, that's one.
Right.
And if that revenue stream has, has been essentially an annual item, even though the timing is odd, and if it goes away, then the town has to find a substitute. And I don't think of retained earnings as a substitute for an ongoing need when we've had that as an ongoing revenue source.
Right, and the reason that I, I say it like that is because we, based on DOR's instructions, are, are not allowed to calculate that as a revenue source. So in all of the budget present, budget projections that we do, it is not a revenue source, it's never anticipated. It is, it, it is received during the year and it automatically goes to retained earnings. So if they stopped, then we would be facing that, that would automatically reduce it.
I, 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 I hear you on that, but as a, sort of a business sense, Brian, it's a, it's a revenue stream. I mean, even though they tell you you can't count it, it's sort of like.
Can we?
Using the airport stuff.
Can you give us at some point in the future, a breakdown on expenses for the island home? And when I say expenses.
Okay.
Operating, operating expenses, salaries, retirement.
Absolutely.
Insurance, retirees that are island home-based that we pay into the, we pay insurance, all that on.
Absolutely.
And then also, so that's the expense side, the income side.
Uh-huh.
Whether, whether we call it retained earns or not, you know, base, take this number, take what we collect per bed, so I can see dollars in, dollars out.
Absolutely.
And get an idea of what we're funding out of the general fund per year versus what the income base is. I'd like to have that, to have this candid discussion about the override.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other questions on this? Next.
Some outstanding items and current unknowns are listed here. There are two citizen warrant articles that request appropriations, 150,000 dollars each. We have not funded them in our budget plan. We don't know our chapter 90 number yet, we won't know that for a couple of more months. Obviously, the subsidy to our island home or, or the override, we don't know what the outcome of that would be, if the board even would put it forward. The impact on, uh, the state aid impact, we think that it will be as good or better than it was for fiscal 16, but we don't have the number yet, so we can't say that for certain. And we do have some expiring contracts that we've been, I think, pretty conservative on as to estimating their costs in the budget, and those are things like the concessions for Jetty's Children's Beach and Surfside, um, the custodial cleaning contracts, the fuel bid, and maybe a couple of other items like that. Preliminary free cash recommendations. Again, this is, this is preliminary, it's not final, but it's something for the board to, to consider. Our free cash, as you know, was certified at 5.4 million. We used 2.3 million at the November 9th special town meeting, which leaves us with about 3.1. We're recommending the, the one one-time town in, expense increase request for 72,000. We're recommending that we add some additional funds into the capital project stabilization fund, which you will recall we established last year with a, with, um, an initial deposit of 1 million dollars, and to use the rest of it to fund town and school capital projects. But that's just, you know, considerations for now. Capital for fiscal 17. The capital program committee pretty well has wrapped up its recommendations on fiscal 17 capital. They are all listed here. I don't know that you want to go through every single item here, but the committee has spent hours going through all of this with the departments and with themselves and with us. We're a little short in a complete and total funding of all of these things without some kind of additional funding source, but to, to maybe quickly go through here, there are some bike path projects for the in-town bike path, as you can see there, some fire department items, and actually through, um, some creative work by the fire chief, the engine seven item was 450,000 dollars, and it's been reduced to 165 because of some military surplus equipment that he's going to retrofit, something like that, right?
Right.
And the ambu, two ambulances would come out of the ambulance reserve fund. The items under public safety, the F Street Bulkhead, Children's Beach, and the dredge plan, all are items that are really needed to be done.
Can I ask, dredge plan where?
It would be an island-wide dredge plan, so that we would engage someone to help us look at all of the areas that either are or aren't dredged now, and, and a better plan of when they should be dredged. We don't have a specific plan.
So we're talking like first bridge, second bridge, the harbors.
Uh, island-wide.
And who's going to design that? So this is just a plan, so we'll spend 150,000 and we're not dredging anything?
Correct.
Permitting.
Sorry, thank you, chief. Permitting is all.
Not to get on track, but where are we at with dredging Pocus Harbor? Do we have the money to do that?
We do.
Or are we short again?
No, we have the money.
And when is it going to happen?
Well, right now, um, the permitting took longer than it was supposed to, and also the, um, getting the, um, waivers to put the sand out, and so right now, we're looking at next year, this time before that'll be dredged, because there's a small window that we're allowed to dredge in, and it's right now, and we don't have the permits.
Who did the permitting, chief?
But the engineer studied. It's not, it, the, the problem is, in this case, was we had to have the landowners give us the easements, and they wouldn't do it. And it took forever, working with their attorneys and towns, council worked on this to get these things done, and it just didn't, it just didn't happen.
This is easements for the spoils?
Yes.
What are we on, like, three years now, we still have a dredge this thing?
Yeah, that's about right, going on to.
Have they given you the easements yet?
I believe we have them now, yeah.
Because, because of.
But that's what we wanted, that's why this dredge plan is so important, because we want to do the whole thing in one big permitting process and do it in a maintenance permit, so that we can annually go in and just do a little bit of dredging here and there and everywhere without having to go through this permitting process for every single project.
And just while you're there, chief, tell me what you knew of the Children's Beach boat ramp.
Um, Children's Beach boat, boat ramp needed additional funding because the original appropriation wasn't enough, um, to do it, but that's going to be, remove the concrete slabs that are there, um, make it so it's deeper, extend the side, um, things to it, fix those, put the concrete slabs back, um, and then the bulkhead there, that I think extend that a little bit, um, to better protect the, the ramp.
And that's permitted?
That is permitted, yeah, yeah.
And this will be enough to get it done?
We, we believe so. Unless something changes that we don't know about, but.
We put it out to bid and we're comfortable with this number?
We, we have not put it out to bid yet, but this is, the number the engineers have given us is that we should be able to do it. Our original estimate wasn't enough.
And we put it out to bid, didn't we?
Yes.
And the bid came in too high.
Came in way too high.
Given the, given the environment of, of municipal bids.
I, I, I think we believe it was recent enough that this should cover it.
Kills me, just, no, no, no one's fault here, but it just kills me when we go through all this effort, we go to town meeting, we appropriate the money, and then we never have enough. And then we come back and we get more, and then we still don't have enough. And then three years later, we're, you know, I'd rather ask for more, not you. And then, three years later, we're, you know, I'd rather ask for more and not use it than not have enough.
I think we tried to...
Welcome to our world.
Just a quick question, is First Way, is that going to have sidewalks and be designed?
First Way will have sidewalks, there's something of a temporary sidewalk now, and I don't know what else.
Oh, yeah, no, I just want to make sure that it's going to have sidewalks and be sort of not a raceway.
The sidewalks, nicer than the road, I wanted to drive on.
So, in these public works items, we've got Phase 1 of the sidewalk improvement plan, the Nobodyer Farm Fieldhouse construction, the roundabout, Surfside Area Road Reconstruction Phase 2, the Islandwide Road Improvements First Way, Wind Street Improvements. Some items on the next...
Is there money for the Nobodyer plant, is there some CPC money for that, or did that get taken away?
There, I think there was some, I don't remember exactly what the initial appropriation was, but that's all, that's gone, it's been used for design.
They used it on other things?
No, they used it on design.
Libby, just back to the prior page on the bike paths, we've had a lot of discussion at our meetings about trying to get a bike path, even if it's, I say temporary, but coming up, out of town towards the Hummock Pond area, for example, and is there anything in here to help get that underway promptly?
Well, that was discussed extensively at the Capital Program Committee. There is a funded project right now that would take, where the bike path ends at present over the Chicken Hill area, and exit out onto Joy Street, and that, that's a funded project, it's been designed, and it's sort of waiting for the development that's going on back there to be completed, is my understanding.
But to, you know, get into it a little more, and this is, I think, where, you know, we talked about priorities for the town, at least for me, I think, you know, we talk about traffic a lot, and getting in and out of town, and that's a concern, and, you know, we've, I think, done a good job in adjusting the later phase of the in-town path, but we haven't really gotten there as far as getting between the mid-island and the town. And, you know, on the capital programs, we don't ask for requests, but if we don't get any, it's, you know, it's kind of a bit of a tit and tat, so I put together a motion, you know, to direct the town manager to look into it and get that into this budget, because it's, I don't think, a lot of money, but I think something that is important for the town, if that's a priority for this board.
So, if we, if we want to discuss that briefly, is this the time? In other words, if we want to make sure that we have a plan, that we've talked about here several different times, and we want to get that underway, I'm not sure it's necessary to get that, something to help us get, get that completed.
Do we have a plan? Because we have a plan that Tobias came up with, but I haven't seen any review from traffic safety on it, that we haven't had drawn it up. I mean, we're taking away 10 or 12 parking spaces that some of you agree with, some of us don't agree with.
Well, this gets down to it, probably, it's like, you know, I'm a board member here, you guys are board members, we all have things to do, but I can only pitch out so many ideas, you know, if, I'm not the one who finalizes the plan.
Right, and I don't know if we are either, I'm wondering if this is something for our traffic planner to do, and traffic safety.
The consensus that we did come with on a board was that we need to connect and have in-town bike paths. Now, how they are and where they are, you know, that needs to be sorted out, but the connection...
Who sorts it out, Matt, I guess is my question.
I understand, but we have to make sure there's, if the reasoning is, we don't have money to sort it out, it'll never happen, and so, the question is, you know, I think as a board, the consensus we had is, we need to connect the good paths we have out of town with downtown somehow, and so, how do we do that?
I give Tobias total credit for coming up with an option. Whether I agree with it or not is irrelevant, it's an option, but who comes up with other options, I guess is my question, is that on Mr. Burns?
You know, I think our first job is to work generally, we can only ask the town manager, and it's up to the town manager to disperse amongst the staff how those things are sorted out. And I think, here, I'm just sort of looking at this, and this looks like the same sort of queue we've had before, and I'm hoping that we can ask for some kind of a plan, whatever that may be, to come back to this board within a reasonable period of time, and if it does take money, I'm not sure it does, but if it does, that we have the opportunity to earmark some part of the capital for this budget cycle to accomplish that. And that sets up a timeframe, Libby, that we need to know that.
Okay, I do not know what you want me to do. If it were easy to get in and out of town, we would have a path by now. We talked today at Capital Program about the difficulties there are in getting an active bike path, or pedestrian way, or whatever, in and out of town. The sort of interim plan came up, which didn't require a lot of any, really, capital involvement, I don't think that got ultimately approved by the board. There's a plan in, a project in place for what I just talked about, of behind where the bike path ends now, over the hill, that's in the works, it can't go any faster than it's going. If, I don't know what kind of plan you want to get out of town to the Hummock Pond Road bike path.
And I guess to get at that a little more, I think back to our earlier discussions, Libby, when we first talked about it, you know, I kind of had a concept, and threw it out there to the board, and there were some questions in regards to it, but, and I don't want to get too off-topic, but, you know, I know Rick, you had some questions, and Bobby, you had some questions about which spaces, you know, were going to be removed, and how does, what are the impacts, and let's get a more, you know, cleared, you know, professionally-done plan, and we haven't seen that yet, and so, it's hard to say, to give that final go-ahead, Libby, that you need.
Well, we have a, I don't know, we have a bike path that goes out to Cliff Road that connects to Maticat Road and goes out that way. We have a bike path that we're developing now that goes from Main Street to the Rotary, and will connect to the Milestone Bike Path, which in turn connects to the Surfside Bike Path, which connects all the way down to Prospect Street, which, you know, extending Prospect Street over Chicken Hill to the Maticat Bike Path, in my mind, essentially creates a bike loop around the island. You can literally ride out around Pulpus, back around, you know. We're not going to have a bike path on every road.
No, no, Bobby, and I don't want to get too into it, but I did throw together a motion that might make things more clear, if we want to take a vote on it, I think it might be helpful.
Well, I'll listen to the motion and see if we get a second, but, you know, I mean, you probably spent a lot of time on this on capital, and what was the capital committee's response to this?
Anybody from...
Obviously, it didn't, it didn't get affirmative voter, it would be on this list, correct?
Well, there wasn't anything on the list, so...
Right, okay. Well, read your motion, and then we'll go from there.
Great, thanks, Bobby. Moved at the Board of Selectmen, request the town manager to develop a plan for a recommended safe bicycle and pedestrian transportation between town and access to the mid-island area, and to the vicinity at the end of the current Prospect Street bike path. Such a plan is to be approved and implemented by July 1st, 2016. If necessary, the costs, takings, parking reductions, and road layout should all be considered, as they may be needed to implement the plan. The town manager will share in a timely manner with the board the interim steps essential to meet this goal, including a capital placeholder for a 2016 annual town meeting, if one is anticipated to be necessary.
I'm going to amend, I'm going to make a friendly amendment to that. It shouldn't be the town manager, it should be the traffic coordinator. It's not Libby's job to come up with a bike path, it should be Mr. Burns is in planning.
And, you know, I...
Bobby, the one thing I would say that is, our, our role as policy setters is to work through the town manager, and it's her job to assign...
But I think it should be specific to say, to instruct them to do it, so they are aware that we're asking them to do it through her, it should be in the motion.
I don't mind, but it's her choice where to go and get the work done, not ours to direct the DPW director, or any other specific employee of the town to do something under our direction, so, that's, I don't mind if you add that kind of a clause, as long as it, I think it has to go through the town manager, though.
And that's what I was saying, it goes through Libby, to planning, and to the traffic coordinator, to come up with a plan.
No problem with that, Bobby, just...
All right, discussion?
Did that motion say to implement the plan and do takings and so forth by July of 2016?
You know, if, you know, we've talked about this...
Is that at all real?
The plan may not have any takings. I think we're trying to get, at least my sense is here, a plan we can agree upon, and if it has impediments that don't, that make the deadline difficult on, that's fine, but we want to get underway on accomplishing, and knowing what the interim steps would be to get it done.
And I was trying to express, you know, let's look at all the options.
Read the motion again, Tobias, because I want to hear it again, one more time.
Thank you for entertaining me, Bobby. Moved at the Board of Selectmen, request the town manager to develop a plan for a recommended safe bicycle and pedestrian transportation between town and access to the mid-island area, and the vicinity at the end of the current Prospect Street bike path. Such a plan is to be approved and implemented by July 1st, 2016. If necessary, the costs, takings, and parking reductions, road layout should all be considered as they may be needed to implement this plan. The town manager will share in a timely manner with the board the interim steps essential to meet this goal, including a capital placeholder for 2016, if one is anticipated to be necessary.
All right, discussion on the motion, or is there a second first?
I'll second that.
I'll second it, yeah. All right, I can't support that motion with the language that's in there, because there's no way in hell that I'm going to support a motion that says takings or implementing a plan until I see the plan. I would support a motion that would say, let's come up with a plan, but until I see the plan, I can't say whether I'm going to support the plan or not.
That's, you know...
I think it's a little far-reaching, I mean, we're going to develop a plan, and we've already approved the plan, we haven't even seen the plans, see what I'm saying?
Bobby, I totally do, and I just wanted to be, be strong in kind of laying out what might be necessary, and just give some scope.
So, why don't we remove those sections, Bobby? I mean, I don't mind...
I would be more than happy to support it if it said to implement a plan by July of 2016, and then we can look at the plan, and we can decide if we support the plan, but I can't support it, just saying, approve the plan, and then approve everything that goes with the plan.
That totally makes sense, Bobby.
Well, why not put a shorter deadline on figuring out a plan that we can look at to approve, and then, once we've approved a plan, put a deadline on implementation?
That sounds like a good idea to me, Don.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, please.
This is exactly why we need a strategic plan. I'm now being told, somewhat out of the blue, to do this. I'm going to have to figure out what to drop in order to figure this out, and there's nothing to drop, because you all want everything done now. I totally understand the frustration of Mr. Glidden in getting this done, and again, if it were easy, it would be done by now. There are, there is a plan to get people in and out of town. My understanding is the in-town bike path, and it is going, as we heard several months ago, when we were trying to take tiny temporary easements from people who were bitterly complaining about it, it's going to take time and money to get it done. There are also poles in the way, there are hydrants in the way, there are hedges, fences, trees, all over the place, that are going to have to all be moved. I don't know what, I don't even have the faintest idea what kind of placeholder we'd have for a capital project for 2017. So, it's going to be quite difficult to do this.
Is there anyone in the audience here from the MPNEDC, besides Mr. Burns and Andrew? There's no member of the board, is there, well, Kara? I mean, this is, for me, this is something that, this is, when I sat my brief tenure on the MPNEDC, this is what we talked about.
You're, Don, Don's on it.
I mean, this is, this is part of the whole strategic plan for them, this is, you know, this is, I mean, I understand your frustration, Libby, I understand your frustration. I personally don't think we need a third way out of town. I think we got Cliff Road, we got this new path that's going to go up Orange Street, you know, you want to ride the bike, ride the loop. You can't have every road, if you're going to ride the roads, you got to have to deal with traffic, you know, it's just, that's me, that's one vote, you know.
But what I'd say, Bobby, is Cliff Road needs to be addressed, and it has needed to be addressed for 15 years. You can't walk up either side of it, you can't, if you're taking a, it's unsafe. The cars are parked on one side, on the sidewalk, the other sidewalk has telephone poles in it. If you watch, during the summer, the busiest days, you watch people walking up the cliff, they go back and forth across that thing three times, you know, so, and so, it's not, we don't have a route out of Cliff Road until you get to, like, North Liberty Street.
You're right, but this isn't Disney World, it wasn't designed first and then built later. These were cart paths, these were horse paths, these were, you know, and now we've got cars in there wider, and we got people, and we got 75,000 people here in the summer, and we can't have it all, Matt, we really can't.
Yeah, I understand that, but we can improve it, and we should be improving it, and so, the question comes, where, who discusses it, and how do we implement it? Were these same things we were talking about when I was a selectman 15 years ago?
You're right.
And so, and nothing has happened, so...
And here's my problem with it, we discuss it at this board level, and then we just assume staff's going to take care of it, and they have a million things to do that are more pressing than trying to figure out a bike route, quite frankly, out of town right now. We have a budget, we have union negotiations, we have all these things, and we have a finite amount of staff, and we throw a million things at them every week and say, this is our priority this week, next week it'll be something else, and, you know, Libby's absolutely right with this strategic plan, you know...
But I think there's, I share the frustration that Libby has and that Toby has, but I also frustration about 15 to 20 years. Some of this stuff is, you know, it's bad for our summer economy, it's dangerous, and we're choosing other things rather than fixing these things. And so, the question becomes, how do we raise, and I don't have the answer tonight, but how do we raise that to the level that it's solved at some point? And, you know, a strategic plan is a great idea, if some of these things can get raised up and be dealt with.
What are we, are we talking about sidewalks, or are we talking about a bike route? I mean, we're certainly not, there's no way to put an actual path that goes into the Old Historic District.
No, I think we're just...
So, I just want to be clear on what kind of plan we would be asking for.
A bike route that would basically, probably, we...
A route on the road.
Some way, we'd have to take away parking on Pine Street, Part Affair, some of these side streets.
Something like the route we looked at before, but some alternative ideas?
I'm assuming, I mean, we don't, we're basically...
I'm just, I'm trying to understand what the motion's saying.
Taking the old plan, we're going to modify it, we're going to start from scratch, you know, I don't know. I mean, but I think, personally, there are more important things to deal with right now than, we have a bike route that we're developing from Main Street to the Rotary, and we have a bike path pretty much most of the way up Cliff Road, and we have a bike path that we're developing now from Milk Street out all the way to Cisco, you know, we can't do it all in one year.
Bobby, I totally agree with that, and I understand that, and I know, you know, and the reason why this is, you know, I didn't want to take away so much time, I was just, you know, if, you know, I would, I would hope that the board would just, you know, we're talking about priorities, we're talking about capital this evening, this is something I thought might be helpful.
And I, and I understand, and I know this is a passion of yours, and I don't want to take anything away from it.
It's not, it's not me, Bobby, a lot of people...
Well, yeah, I agree, a passion of mine is to fix all the sidewalks downtown. I'd rather fix every sidewalk downtown before we spend another penny on bike paths.
And Bobby, I, you know, what's great about this, you know, plan is, you know, we have 1.5 million dollars to address sidewalks downtown, and start, and we have a plan, we're moving forward, that's a start, and I'm, all I'm asking for is just, you know, the board to direct staff to move forward.
Maybe as simple as just putting the, agreeing on where the path, the preferred route would be, just as a start, and that doesn't have to take any parking places.
Well, we have a bike route now that's marked with signs, and we can paint the things on the streets and call it a day, but it does go up...
It's a step in the right direction, as long as we agree that's the preferred route, Bobby, so, anyway.
I got a motion, it's been made, seconded.
All right, there is a motion that's been made, seconded.
And I think it's been...
Has it been modified to just say a plan only?
Amended by Bobby to take out any reference to the takings and the specifics. I think Don, I did, Matt did, and I think Don had an excellent idea to change it a little bit further, to make it a plan, help me with what you were suggesting.
I was just suggesting that we could direct for there to be a plan put in, that we could approve, and then we would put a deadline on implementation, once we had realistic times.
It puts a deadline on getting a plan in front of us, Don.
I just want to be clear on what plan we're talking about.
Mr. Burns, you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear myself, being that this is probably going to end up in my email tomorrow. You're correct, there is an accepted route in and out of town, I think the DPW will paint that this spring, so we'll have a signed and a stenciled route in and out of town. Staff is also working on the in-town bike path, that Phase 1 has been bid, so there's some progress with that, which is a great achievement, I think, in my mind. We've also tried to extend the Hummock Pond Road bike path along Milk Street, that project is on schedule and in budget. We've extended the Cliff Road bike path into town, a half mile in 2009, there's an idea to put, there's no more room left for a bike path, so we can do a sidewalk along there, and that's been identified, and it's in our transportation plan. There are a number of different other sidewalk improvements that we've identified, it's roughly 10 or 11 million dollars for the projects, which is what's fueling this request here, this sidewalk improvement plan Phase 1. There's 10 phases of that, and I can... There's 10 phases of that, and I can go through and highlight all those and discuss that with you. I think that'll provide a lot more clarity on how you actually get it in and out of town along some sidewalks, and then how bicyclists are just going to share the road along a stenciled route, or take some other route that's not endorsed or communicated out to the public. I mean, bicyclists can use any road they'd like, but we have a safe route that we can suggest to them. I can highlight, highlight all this, too, that already does exist, and it is in the regional transportation plan. And that might provide some clarity rather than coming up with a brand-new plan. I don't think you need a brand-new plan. I think you need to just highlight the components of the existing plan so that you understand exactly what's in the plan and how you do get in and out of town with the projects that are recommended in that study. I mean, it was an informed plan from the Roads and Rightway Committee, the Bike Pedestrian Committee, the MPNEDC. It's been thought out, so the, I mean, an accusation that something like this doesn't exist, it's not correct. It does, but we can do a better job of highlighting that and bringing that to you if that's what your motion's to do.
Now, part of the problem here is, is that we're all, we all have our own little pet peas, you know, of things we want to get done. Tobias would like to have more access to town with bikes. I get, well, no, let me just finish. Matt would like the cars to not park on the sidewalks, but the reality is, people park on the sidewalks in Nantucket. Unless we ban sidewalk parking, which is going to take probably away 25, 30% of the parking downtown, I mean, Cliff Road, for example, they park half on the sidewalk, half in the road, so the cars can get by because it's a two-way lane. Or where you're talking about, out to your, out to the sandwich shop. I see it every day.
Well, don't get me started on that. I don't want to spend a million and a half, I don't want to spend a million and a half dollars to fix sidewalks, to have cars park on them and they're ruined the next day. Quinn Street was ruined in two days.
I don't think this million and a half's going to sidewalks that people park on.
Well, understood, but Quinn Street was ruined in, in two days. The neighbors spent like $85,000, two days later, it was ruined. And so, you know, that, that, we don't want, like, if we're going to do these, spend this money, let's spend, let's spend it intelligently, you know, like, let's not...
Well...
And Bobby, just, you know, to, to respond to that, I, if this isn't a priority of the board, I totally understand. I don't want to feel like I'm trying to twist anyone's arm, you know? I just think it's, I think it might be helpful, you know, we have a lot of cyclists in downtown.
I think we all should voice our, our, what we think are important, and it's important, this is important to you, and, you know, I, you know, there, it's, we're having a discussion about it, and the majority of the board will decide whether we're going to do this or not. But, you know, this is a discussion that's, it's gotten off track here, but, you know, the reality is, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of cars, and we have limited space. We have limited space for cars, we have limited space for parking, we have limited space for bikes. There's nothing, we could spend a month on this, short of ripping everything out of town and redesigning everything, we still wouldn't come up with a way to fix it. We can make, we do the best we can with what we have. I, you know, I think the bike path out of town on Orange Street is not a perfect thing. I don't like a lot of things about it, but it's better than what we have. Stenciling the bike path through town is not a perfect world, but it's better than what we have. But that, that, that's just me. So we have a motion on the board, on the floor to instruct the town manager to direct to have a plan come, made up for an in-town bike path that connects downtown to the Prospect Street bike path. It's been made, it's been seconded by Rick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Rick and Tobias, all those opposed? Aye.
And I want to see, I want Mike to come in, I want to see what the, you know, what's the status of those, but I want this to stay on as a top priority.
So what are you voting?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining.
Well, so we're two to one.
I don't understand what we're asking for.
We're asking for, we're asking for the town administration to come back to us with, for a plan by July 2016 with a plan...
It might be as simple as what Mike just said.
Are we saying that we're unhappy with the current plan?
There is no plan.
Or do we want to review, go back and review what's already in the plan?
No, we don't have a plan for what Tobias is asking, what this motion is asking for. We have a stenciled route right now that's existing, that goes, well, it goes into town, it doesn't really come out of town because it goes down through one-way streets. Am I correct on that?
So what are we asking for?
We're asking for a...
We're, you know, I, Bobby, if...
Go ahead.
I'm trying to help clarify, and I'm sorry to take away Libby from our discussion. What I'm asking for is, I thought I came up with an idea that might help the board's priority of getting folks in from downtown to the Mid-Island by the summer. I had an idea for how it might take place. I don't think it's the perfect way to do it, and what I'm asking for is that to be reviewed by town staff and various committees, whoever the town manager thinks is appropriate, in order to come up, in order to bring that into fruition. I think the bike route we currently have is nice, but it is not sufficient. Maybe just some improvements will be enough to that, but I'd like to go above and beyond. Is that clear, Bobby?
So you want staff to review the plan that you came up with last summer?
And that we talked about, you know, you had some questions about it, Rick had some questions about it, Matt, and nothing happened with it, and so I'm just asking for, for that process to take place.
Then I, I will support that being reviewed, if it hasn't been reviewed.
Could we just clarify that we want to, it's a bike route, it's not a bike path, and it's the, the new proposal that was brought before us, that you helped create, I'd love to see that compared to the existing and see the pros and cons of each route, and see if it could be tweaked, how many parking spaces are lost, so on and so forth. That, that I'm fine with, but I don't think it was clear what we were asking for.
And I support that as well. I'm changing my abstain to support.
I think you helped make it clear.
Thank you, Don, it's been, it's helpful.
All right, so the vote, all is in favor, please?
Aye.
Yes, 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 yes. I oppose it.
And again, sorry for the confusion, board, but I think it'll help move us in the right direction.
I kind of think we already did this once, but we'll do it again. All right, let's move on, back to the budget. Any questions for anyone, for Libby on this page besides what we just did?
Okay, the next page is a lot of equipment replacements, vehicle replacements, things of that nature, and if you go down to...
I'm sorry, asphalt recycler hot box, that's so we can patch the roads and not use the coal patch anymore so they won't come out, right?
Yeah. Should, Bobby, just, we had a bit of discussion on capital, it sounds like it's going to be a real big improvement.
Huge, definitely will help.
So you can see the total there of all of those items is 9.1 million. There are some potential funding sources listed below, which include proceeds from the real estate sales account. Right now, there's about 4.4 million dollars in that account, perhaps if we used 2 million. We weren't recommending using all of it. There are some prior year capital article re-appropriations, there's the free cash, there's capital from the operating budget, a couple of other funds, waterways and ambulance reserve, and that still leaves almost 3 million without a funding source at the moment. So some of the ways in which to address that would be to reduce and/or eliminate some of the items that are on this list and/or seek an override.
Yeah, you have to go, essentially, your, your usual option, our usual option is a debt service override, and you pick something out that's sizable enough to work through the system, right?
What is the 150 from the waterways going to be used for?
Dredge plan.
Dredge plan?
Mm-hmm.
And what does that leave us in that fund? Does that tap it?
No, but it's not...
And how much did we put in, in the reserve for town pier, future repairs?
I think it's 50, 50...
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
On an annual basis.
All right, so we're starting to build a capital reserve fund for that?
Well, it's tapered in that account.
Yeah, so, we got 350, we're adding 75, that's going to bring us to 4 and 1/4, hopefully we'll add another 75 next year, so we're going to be ahead of the game is hopefully what I'm getting at, so we don't have to go for another million-dollar override if we had a major storm event.
So Bobby, the idea is to replace planks or pilings periodically over time?
Yeah, the only other question I had on that is, I know at one point we talked about getting rid of the, we, we made a temporary repair to the old floating dock. Are we getting concrete floating docks, or are we sticking with the old wooden ones that we repaired? Or is that going to be another appropriation that we ask for separately?
That would be another appropriation.
And, and when is, where, when and where is that in the queue?
That'll be several years out because there's permitting in process for that now because we have to dredge it in there in order to do that. So we just got the Army Corps permit, I believe, to do that here recently.
So have we considered, Bill, and I just want to throw this out there, removing those floating docks in the wintertime so that we don't get them broken in half every year by the winter storms? Because the ones that are there now, one good northeaster, and they're going to, we're going to have the same problem we had last three years in a row, because they're not designed to take that kind of wave action. And in other towns, they take their floating docks out of the water, there's very few boats on those docks. Is it something that we've looked at, what would cost, where we could put them, that kind of thing, or is it just something that's too difficult to do?
I think you're, what you just said is the ultimate answer. We have talked about it, but for some reason, and I can't recall the entire conversation, it came back to wasn't worth the effort, but I can look into that and get back to you.
I mean, even if we, Don?
While we were talking about it, if there's permitting being gone through on the town pier, I believe that there's the ability for potentially expanding it to create more slips, and is that something we could discuss on funding options for that? Because we have a growing, growing population, and not everyone is able to get a spot.
I would imagine we could. It's the, the area we're permitting, or we're looking at dredging, I don't think would be used for what you're talking about.
Okay.
An expansion, because it would go over much shallower water.
I'd, I'd love to talk about that more when it's possible.
I just, if we're going to, I just don't want to have another $100,000 bill in the spring to fix those floating docks for, because we didn't bother to pull them over on Washington Street Beach or something like that.
Now, the, the problem, that's a lot of docks, and a place to put them is probably, part of the problem. And the ones we do take out, the dinghy docks, because they're a lot, they don't have the secure holdings, I think they're easier with these, the things, the, the floating dock has those big metal rings around those big steel pilings that would have to all be removed, and I'm not so sure that that's that easy a process. But we'll look into it and I'll get back to what we can do.
You know, I mean, the last two winters, that dock has gotten decimated, and we spend, I don't know what, 40, $50,000 to repair it every year.
Which might be the cost of removing it, so...
Yeah, I just would like to look at it. Thank you. Thank you, Libby.
The Capital Program Committee goes to the Finance Committee next Tuesday to review this, just FYI. What is not included in here are the sewer projects that we've been talking about.
Well, they're down at the bottom, aren't they?
They're, they're shown there, yes.
I mean, I just think of them as sort of a separate standalone, and I assumed they were...
They are.
They were there, you know?
Yeah, what I mean is...
We'll have to decide what, what happens, but...
We have to have Woodward and Kern really crunch those numbers, because due to the increased cost and all municipal spending, these numbers might not be right.
Yeah, and I know, and I know that Brian's working with them actively to do that.
We talked at our agenda meeting of bringing forward an update on that as soon as we have some more accurate numbers. Just to keep in everybody's mind, the sale of the fire station property is not included here, and that could maybe be a potential source at a later time. The next couple of pages are enterprise fund requests, not, we maybe don't need to go through every single one of them, but just to point out the island home items, we probably will not have enough room in our retained earnings number to fund those, so that, they will probably have to be borrowed in some manner and paid back through either a combination of island home retained earnings or budget and general fund, although it's not a gigantic amount.
Well, I mean, the bathroom upgrades and the residential room upgrades, if we're going to build a new facility, do we want to spend 500,000? Or they, or they have to happen?
And I think they really, really should, Bobby. It's the right, it's the right thing to do, and then...
Just ask them.
Yeah, no.
Bobby, it's a good question, because we have a few of these every year, and you go back a few years, there's always something, and that's why we...
Window repairs have to be done, EC units have to be done, I just...
That's why we got to accelerate the rest of our other discussion.
Right.
Because this is going to just keep on trucking here.
Exactly.
What's the vault from, the million dollar on the airport?
That...
What is that?
Tom, can I answer that more specifically, but that's for the electrical...
The airfield electrical transport.
Yeah, so there's a big box of circuit breakers, and a vault is a...
Lady lights come on when you come in, in the plane.
Yeah, in the right, the right lights come on in the right place.
Kind of important.
I was just wondering what that was.
I want to just go to daytime operations.
The next page has some additional enterprise fund items, just shown.
Are any of the, besides the island home, are any of the enterprise fund requests going to require overrides, or are they all going to be able to be funded through retained earnings?
The island home won't require an override, and I think the only thing would be the sewer.
But airports?
Airports also, everybody else would be paid for out of their budget or revenue.
One thing... Go back one second, real quick, Erica.
One more?
No, right there, one, yeah. Supplemental lining for the, funding for the line landfill, that's the new cell?
Yes.
And that's the landfill mining continuation, where we bump that from 500 to 700?
Actually, it was been 700.
It's been seven?
I think it's been that for two years. And I'm just remiss if I didn't mention, you know, this was back in the general fund, but the school maintenance, you know, doing a lot of window replacements on that, you know, it gets to be substantial, so...
Yeah.
When we, when we talk about, you know, building a building right, you know, it doesn't always pay to get the low bidder, you know? Get, getting things fixed, you know, done right saves money in the long term.
Yeah, that's for the school, that's for the eighth grade.
Ninth grade, Erica.
Four years ago?
Yeah, no, definitely, but just to keep in mind.
So next steps include, as I mentioned, Capital Program Committee is going to FinCom next Tuesday. The Finance Director and I and some others are going to the School Committee meeting next Tuesday to review this presentation that we're giving you now. You all have a public hearing on January 6th, and at that time, you would, in keeping with prior years, adopt a recommended fiscal '17 general fund budget. Also, at your meeting, I forgot to put this on, but at your meeting next week, December 16th, we have an item on the agenda for any items you want to discuss further from, in the fiscal '17 budget. On January 7th, we're scheduled to go to the Finance Committee and review whatever our recommendations are. January 20th, we'll review the enterprise fund budgets with you, and then mid-January, mid-March, as usual, the FinCom will review all of the budgets and financial appropriation items headed towards the town meeting on Saturday, April 2nd. We have a number of slides that, just for illustrative purposes, these are, maybe, Brian, do you want to take us quickly through the slides? We don't have to spend a lot of time on them.
Okay, so the first slide just is another breakdown of revenues and expenses, breaks it down a little bit more than the slide in the first couple pages that we had, in terms of the expenses more so than the revenue, just where all of the 86 million is being in terms of the expenses, more so than the revenue, just where all of the 86 million is being apportioned to. State aid is, or, I'm sorry, the revenue one is essentially the same as the one on the first page.
Brian, we have 8% debt service right now? If we were to, the town meeting were to approve all these sewer overrides and everything else, what's that going to jump our debt service to?
I'd have to go back and look. I didn't, I'd have to break it down based on the timing, but it would be, I wouldn't want to tell you without, I don't want to guess, to be honest with you.
Because don't we have a policy of, was it 12 and a half?
12, I believe, is, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm assuming some of this debt service is going to retire in the next year.
And there's about 65% coming off in the next 10 years anyway, so I think it still would be within the scope.
So we may have one or two years where we're right at the threshold, a little bit over, but then it's going to drop significantly.
Brian, this is a silly question, but in my mind, like, solid waste, you know, we spend about $5 million a year, you know, making that run and work. And it's not subsidized, but the Island Home and the Sewer Enterprise Fund are, why are they called subsidies?
Well, because they're funded by, it's called a subsidy because it's funded by the tax base. I mean, they're an enterprise fund, which is typically a user fee-based, and so the revenue brought in by the two, those particular enterprise funds does not cover it. So it's a subsidy from the tax, from the taxes that were, or the revenue that's collected in the general fund.
And we have overrides for the airport, I think, I mean, for the landfill, that's why it's, it's under debt service, it's not under.
But I would concur that the use, you know, if you, if you dropped all the enterprise funds and converted them back to departments, like the fire department or the school department, then you wouldn't use that term.
You're right.
So, I am one who, because I think there's often a purpose in using the term the way it's used. And I think sometimes we might just think about it, saying it's a general fund funding of the activity, because subsidy just implies other things.
I can change the word subsidy to appropriation or something like, if that would be, if that's what everybody would like to see, that's fine.
I don't have a problem.
I speak, I think I'd feel more comfortable, because it's, it's what we're doing. We choose to fund an activity, whatever it happens to be, whether it's in an enterprise fund or in the general fund.
Okay, absolutely. So the next slide, as you can see by the color coding on the bottom, breaks down the, where the expenses are in turn, which is basically a compilation of the, a couple of slides here. The 6.8 is the operational piece. 3.1 backs out the, is only the general fund portion for retirement, and then medical insurance and salaries.
Back to that last slide, the one that gets me every time that you do this is that they should be going up, 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 and you've kept them flat. If you looked at the numbers, 14, 3 to 17, 6, 3, 2 to 7, 5, 2, 5 to 3, 1, 5 to 6, 8.
I'll actually have to look at that, because you're right, that should be going.
And so it's misleading.
It's going in the inverse, it's going in the inverse direction rather, so, yeah, we will take a look.
You want to look at it 100%.
I understand, I understand, but it's somewhat misleading, because it looks like, oh geez, it's sort of staying flat.
We'll look at, a way to change that, though, to make it to what you're looking for.
Yeah.
And we have another graph, which, too, I don't know what's going on with 2014, but 2000, it's just showing all the revenues. It's essentially the pie chart in a different formula. And this is the last slide, which I believe uses 2009 as the benchmark for the employment. So we have town and school, and how we calculate it for this is as easy as we can do it without looking at every single employee.
And I actually do, and I like that one better. That's been improved over the last couple of years, just so you know.
Okay.
But it is interesting, we've grown as a town, but we haven't grown in the number of employees. We're adding a couple this year, but the numbers have gone up substantially, but the numbers of people that do the work haven't. And so that's one of the things that we need to get a control, handle on somehow.
Right.
It's quite interesting that the, the amount of the operating budget that goes to actual things other than salaries is less than what the insurance is. You know, when you think about what we, all the things that we do, you know, all the services that we have to provide, the actual cost for those services is less than the cost for the insurance for the employees. And we're a service-based company, that's what we do.
Okay. Can you go to the budget message? I just want to take you quickly through the budget message, and again, it's a draft until the board is comfortable with it. This is, okay.
This is in our packet.
This is in your packet, it's been maybe revised slightly since it went into your packet, not a lot. This is just an introduction about the town's financial position, keep going, go to the chart.
I found this very helpful, by the way. You know, if I was a taxpayer out there, just kind of go in our pack and, you know, I think it's very helpful.
This will get posted online, well, it'll be in the packet online, but when it's complete and finished, it'll get posted online as well. So this is, this is just, again, showing the projected revenues, the expenses in a more detailed manner. And then, go to the next page, I think. We discuss the expense increases in a broad way, and then into the detail about the personnel and expense-specific items. And that goes on for a couple of pages, and then we get to Section 3, which is the future year considerations. Keep going. This is part of Section 3, the staffing assessment that we discussed already. We talked about the health insurance, the sewer improvements, contact expirations. Those are just all school things that are going to be coming up. And then we have other recommendations, this is where we mentioned the Island Home issue. And then, just the conclusion as to, you know, overall what we're able to fund or proposing to be able to fund in this budget, and some thank yous, and that's it. There's a pile of attachments that are something like this, which will also all be posted online along with the message that if people want to go and look at some of the backup detail, they could see it here.
Libby, I thought the, I just, it was very, was well-done, I'd say very well-done, so.
Kudos to you and your staff, Libby.
Thank you.
I don't know, Bobby, if you want to talk about some more, if you want to have a resolution tonight to support the messages prepared or whatever, but.
I'm comfortable with that, I mean, you want to make that motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion, again, I think it was well-done. It lays out the town's priorities in many ways, and sort of the background is to what we're doing, and I'd certainly support the message. An emotion to approve or to have the board endorse, is that the right word? Erica, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, seeing none? Got it on the first try, Libby.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the help of all the department heads. Not everybody got everything they wanted, but there weren't too many loud complaints, and everybody's been very helpful and cooperative, so we really appreciate it.
I think it was a year where there was a fair amount of funding available, so, and there were things we wanted to get going on. So I think that's all part of what makes it a good message, Libby.
Yeah, I would want to thank the school superintendent as well, because he's been very, very helpful and cooperative and very good to work with.
All right. Does that take care of the budget presentation?
Yes.
All right, that takes care of our agenda. Since this is a workshop, we have no committee reports tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.